Oh, I'll allow you to talk first. Hey, John, can you confirm that you can hear us okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, cool.
Okay, well, I guess as usual, we'll start out with the staff report. So page nineteen in the package. All items I'll go over tomorrow. We did host a kickoff meeting with our consultant team working on our long range plan update. Recall my fault transportation plan. This week, I am sending out invitations to try to get steering committee members for that effort. So I want to get representation for multiple departments of DOT, both cities, various borough departments, but also reaching out to folks like Sport Fairbanks, Visitor Center, Access Alaska. I kind of have a whole long list of different organizations I want to reach out to see if they want to appoint as representatives to the committee. We're trying to have our first steering committee meeting in early September, first or second week. Once I have a list of people that have committed, also another duty goal to identify at a date. But the time commitment is going to be five to six steering committees meetings over the next year and a half. So it's about one every other month or so. Won't be exactly that on the schedule. But the first steering committee meeting will be kind of like the whole goals and visions of our current plan and the one like modifications going into our plan about today. So I'm stay tuned for that.
And Jackson, how will the RPO hold into, will that have any role at all in the MTP? Because you guys have an RPO component too, don't you, for the broader borough that's outside?
We're a pilot RPO, but we don't have any funding to do that work. So the thirty thousand dollars a year that's promised to us by DOT is not sufficient for us to really get anything off the ground. So I had hoped that we had a couple hundred thousand dollars to throw into the separate to combine it. So it's a long range plan for the entire borough. And primarily focused on the urban area, but we want to look at these other smaller communities outside of our boundary. But that funding would have to come through DOT with say statewide planning funds and then we would want the Borough Assembly to pay the nine percent match on that. So that hasn't all come together. So this time we're just going to be doing an update to the urban area plan.
Does anybody, I mean, does my planning team know about that ask?
Yes.
Okay.
They have for a couple of years now. Yeah, there's not been anything included in the STIP or RPOs. I mean, RPOs.
Well, it sounds like we could maybe do it under the, under the work program set up for the STIP.
Yeah, correct. But if you don't have enough planning statewide planning funds, you can also use statewide STV.
Right.
So and then you would, that would like to show up instead. But anyways, we haven't come to any type of funding agreement and how we would accomplish that work. But later on, later on the agenda, I'm, I have some priorities for the next service transportation bill. And one of my priorities is to see if the next transportation bill could have dedicated planning funds for RPO work, regional planning organizations. Okay, moving on, we also held a work session with our walk ride and roll advisory committee to dust off their non-motorized project priorities. They went through a pretty intensive effort to identify a list of projects in priority order, primarily sidewalk and path projects throughout Fairbanks and North Pole in twenty twenty-two, I think it was. And so this work session was kind of a status update on which projects have been built, which are currently in design and which ones don't have not yet received funding that we're still trying to move those forward. So we're gonna, I put together a spreadsheet that shows everything that's already been constructed. What's in design, headed in construction and what is still left to be funded. Some of the projects that are left to be funded are challenging. They're really expensive. And we found out even here recently with like a sidewalk in Letherton Street, there isn't a maintenance. The, the borough hasn't taken over maintenance of the rail crossing. And so to get a path or a sidewalk, you know, along Letherton, all the way into Town and Lakes Recreation Area, there's a gap that prohibits us from using federal funding for a project like that. So there's, there's certain challenges that we're discovering as we discuss these. But at the next walk, ride and roll advisory committee meeting, we will present back to them basically all of our findings and status. And and see what they, they would like to have moved forward into our long range plan update for non-motorized apartments. I did travel to Washington DC, met with leadership at the EPA, August sixth, I was down there. I was down there for the whole, well, not the whole week, Monday through Thursday. But the first day on Monday, I met with the National Association of MPO staff. On what I was trying to accomplish with the EPA, you know, through our various letters over the past couple of years, we've sent them four letters so far. But this one got us immediately. And so they identified a number of other MPOs in Utah and California that were also supportive of our regulation changes. But they really wanted to spend most of the meeting with me on our priorities for the next transportation bill, which are going to be reflected in the packet. The next day I met with staff from Senator Sullivan's office. The timing of this trip was very unfortunate. The legislation was called back into session. So the folks that wanted to travel to DC with me could come with me and then Murkowski and Sullivan were back up in Alaska during that same week. But they gave me a lot of staff to join me at this meeting with the EPA. And so I give representation there from Sullivan's office and Vegas's office and Senator Myers was able to join us on Zoom. And I actually think that his testimony in front of the EPA leadership was probably the best out of everyone. I mean, Sullivan supported it, Vegas supported it. But Murkowski supports it, but Senator Myers kind of dumbed down that issue a lot better than I could because I'm speaking very technical. There's a lot of technical people in the room. They understand what I'm saying. But anyway, so it's a very productive meeting, but you know, you don't walk away from those meetings with any promises. What I heard very loud and clear at the end is that they, they fully understand what our request is and they think it's reasonable. And so Sullivan's office has agreed to kind of bird dog down. It sounds like they have just about a weekly meeting with different EPA folks on a variety of issues. So they'll keep checking in on them. And then this morning I reached out to the EPA folks that work on our air quality plans. This is Matt Gention at Test Blue. And they have agreed to reach out to leadership to debrief on what their thoughts are, but they have not received any official communication yet. I'm like, yes, let's open up this rule and start working on regulation amendments. So anyways, I'm still waiting, waiting to hear. But I think it was very worthwhile. I think one of the things that the EPA one of the things that I pointed out that really resonated with them is that there are these de minimis SARS exemptions, which is what we're looking for for PM ten but not PM two point five. So it's the same pollutant, just a different particle size, but they already have that in regulation for a very similar fluid. And it just got a little bit, and they started down the path of creating these source exemptions for PM two point five, but they never finished it when they finalized the rule sixteen. So that was a light bulb in, in the EPA's mind of, okay, well, that doesn't seem fair. We should, if we're going to do it for PM ten, we should do it for PM two point five. Clearly our model, so. Anyway, that's yeah, it was, it was a big trip and there's big conversations. We've got full support from our congressional delegation. They're also working on real estate issue very hard with EPA and that. Fortunately or unfortunately came up with immediate, it's a little bit of a distraction of what I'm asking for, but it is all related to the same thing. So the EPA leadership is very well aware grievance from our area. So Sullivan's office seems to be taking the lead on this issue, on this issue for that. So. Good, yeah. I also met with you remember it was late last week or it was yesterday, Monday, but I met with the rural real estate staff as well as DOT right away and the product manager who got home on the Chover Walk Project. So I, I do have my hands, the appraisal that was prepared. There are three paths forward. One is, you know, outright property acquisition. One is sticking with the city's permit. One is sticking for, or move forward with the lease that the city would sign. All three have price tags. And the railroad has indicated to me that the appraisal I have my hands is public information and I can freely share it. But DOT right away said, well, we have a process we have to follow. So what we're going to do is an executive session at September meeting to discuss the appraisal report and the options for the policy board on this. And staff from the rural real estate department will be flying up to that meeting, be here in person, discuss those different options. So provided, oh, sorry, Scott Grass. He's joined us. Anyways, provided DOT right away would like this to be an executive session. Anyways, I don't feel comfortable talking about the numbers, you know, in this public meeting or policy board month, but I do have those numbers. And then we'll be sure to be all, we have this executive session next month. So.
So, so there may be one option that wasn't presented in that and there, there is a legislative solution as well, just to be aware of.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what that solution would be.
Remember the details? We were working on it last session and then then we started getting beaten up in both different corners and focused there instead. But there is a, there is a legislative solution that, that Ryan talked me through when I was working with Andy Mills on at one point. So.
Well, maybe we could discuss that as well, the executive session. So yeah, that'll be on next month's agenda. Okay, so next page, we did send a letter to the Bureau Team's Commissioner's Office on requesting information on Bureau coordination items. No response yet on that. Also, I drafted a letter on our MPO's priorities for the next service transportation bill, which our current bill will expire September thirty of twenty twenty-six. And so Congress will be needing to work on passing the reauthorization bill. And our congressional delegation was very interested in what our priorities would be. And so I put these together to submit to USDOT. They are due tomorrow. So after the meeting, I've got to submit them online.
So that got extended to September. That is my understanding. We actually just have this, this, the state's working on a response as well.
It was not heard of. Okay.
Yeah, we Catherine brought it up and showed us. So you might just double check on that.
Okay, I will. I'll check on that separately, September. So that'll be an action for tomorrow. We'll get into that here in a minute. We did put together an initial draft of our twenty twenty-six office budget, which I intend to present tomorrow with opportunity for any amendments the board would like to see. But typically what I do is I present it at the August meeting and then the budget is formally adopted at the September meeting. We have an executive section for merit increases for employees. So at that, at that same meeting. So there'll be two bites of the apple here, so August and September of the budget. But our initial budget is included in that here to present tomorrow. And then public outreach. We're being encouraged and putting on bike ballet events, the music in the garden. Of course, the summer, you guys just wrapped up your last one, the ability for a season. He's about that great. We completed our distribution between twenty-five bikeways maps. I also provided a presentation to the Borough Assembly. They're committed a whole on our product selection process of fast planning. And then we did draft up a resolution of appreciation for the girls involved programs and action items for tomorrow for you all to pass. Get it printed on a paper, add some signatures to it. But we could have a draft where you're reviewing tomorrow. And then we helped do subcommittee meetings on the fast approval program to identify the project list and funding proposal for twenty twenty-six construction. And and that was recommended by the technical committee for adoption tomorrow without any further changes. Pages twenty-one and twenty-two is our technical committee action items. Two different topics here. The first one of which was the USDOT Safe Roads Initiative. The list that DOT created for the Safe Roads Initiative wasn't provided to us until the day before the technical committee meeting. So it did not make its way into the packet. And there wasn't adequate time for the technical committee to renew or provide input or make a motion to support. I have heard through the National Association of MPOs that USDOT is putting together a fact sheet for this list because I think there's some confusion across other state DOTs and MPOs across the country as to what's being asked for. And they may provide an extension for that being turned in. But this time it will just be an informational update for tomorrow's meeting. So there's no input from the technical committee on that list at this time. And then yeah, they unanimously recommended that the twenty twenty-six construction project list for the fast approval program be advanced to you all for fund, for approval and funding. In addition to the specific projects, we are doubling the amount of funding for the fast improvement program. So it's raising it from just over a million to just over two million for construction. We have, do have those funds available for twenty-six to dedicate to that, to that program. And then the next motion and next eight amendments are related to the priorities for the next transportation bill. So there's eight amendments. Every edit to the letter passed unanimously and then the letter as amended was approved. And then so bottom of next page, the technical committee also approved the construction funding increase for Cal Street reconstruction. This is for overrun, the traffic control for that project. Based on the amount, it does utilize the remainder of our offset funding for this year, but also does borrow if it's about a hundred and fifty thousand or so from twenty twenty-six funds to fully cover that increase. But that was within their authority to approve and they did, they approved that last Wednesday. And they forwarded the resolution of appreciation of rules to the policies. So it'll be an action that's tomorrow.
That Cal Street opened up yesterday.
Oh, good. Because they were saying Tuesday they would open up. So and they are.
Very early. Amazing. That's very nice.
Good. So that's all I had for the staff or number chair report. So business, the first two items are Lawrence. First one is my fault the plan and our boundary intergovernmental operating agreement discussion followed by safe roads.
Yep. There's nothing else to say about it. And just reopening discussions so that we can get to resolution on the, the operating agreement updates that were requested by the commissioner's office and our Department of Law so that we can move forward and get the boundary expansion set forward. So I think it'd be good to have discussion on that. I did talk to Ryan. So there's the things that, that law wanted us to include, but I think there's some other topics that have kind of come out as these conversations have evolved that warrant some discussion on the operating agreement as well, like who pays back the feds when an MPO makes the decision to cancel a project that federal dollars were already been expended on that's there's one that you guys are considering. And then there's also there's one in Anchorage recently that, that question certainly comes up on. I think it's worth addressing. There's also the tip stip coordination, how and when a lot of the three C conversations that have been going on, I, I feel strongly with operated agreement is the place to codify those expectations. It's currently where a lot of that conversation lives. And so, you know, my hope is, I think we have fresh bases on this conversation. So my hope is that we can have a dialogue, may take some work sessions, probably one technical, take a take a start at, you know, what's working in the operating agreement, what isn't. And maybe some ideas of how we address some of these, these areas that don't have a lot of clarity in the current operating agreement. But tomorrow will just be a dialogue to, to open that conversation, figure out how we want to approach it. It's you know, I'm hopeful it doesn't need to be an argument over authorities. At the end of the day, you know, we can we can argue till we're blue in the face on authorities. Ultimately, federal highways determines whether or not a project can advance. Not any of us. And I would like to just see those operating agreements, make sure they're covering all of these points of coordination that have been challenging lately so that we have clear expectations. And then of course, Department of Law is clear on some of these, these statutory regulatory references that they would like to see included. My perspective on those, if they exist, whether they're in an operating agreement or not. So that's kind of where I stand on those pieces. But ultimately, we need to take it, put it back on the table so that we can get through this and not be up against the December thirty-first twenty twenty-six deadline that nobody knows what happens, right? You cannot want to put with the Fairbanks areas transportation program at risk. Hope this, so hope we can all kind of work together on that. Figure out, figure out how we're going to tackle it. Hopefully not just supposed to. So that's operating. Safe Roads is pretty straightforward. We made a list as requested. It's the full list. And we kind of go through the logic with that. But essentially we have the safety data, you know, it was basically the same data that we use for the HSIP program, spin it out, screened it for arterials. The list is the list. And then we also looked at some operational barriers as well, things like bridges that are too narrow, bridges that restrict loads compared to the rest of the route. Bridges with particular vulnerabilities like what we just sort of call fracture critical. It's a type of design, the trusses are kind of the classic example where there are components of them where if one component fails, the whole bridge fails. Off our, off our arterial networks. High restricted bridges, you know, those get hit. The particular anchorage, we've had some really significant impacts, but even here in Fairbanks, you know, Pushman over crossing got struck and head flows down on Park's Highway. So when you get that, so some of those operational issues, the freight bottlenecks. So this was a twenty eighteen report. It was revisited in twenty-one, twenty-two when they were updating the freight plan and validated. But essentially, a list of, of locations that have been identified as restrictions to freight movement, obviously. Coming from Port of Anchorage, Fairbanks, up to the slope, coming up the Alaska Highway is all critical to our economy here. And so that was why we included the freight bottleneck information. And I feel like I have one more list we generated. Yes, congestion. And so the other thing, there's this, this company called Inrix that your car is actually transmitting data, not everybody's car. But a lot of modern vehicles now have this capability and they transmit data and Inrix has the ability to process it and identify areas of persistent congestion. And so for that, we we screened our, we did, this is one list that was screened. We established a criteria of eight months or more. So majority of the year at level of service D, which is sort of that, that's sort of the, the minimum standard for congestion in arterial intersection or intersection. So if your level of service D or worse for eight months or more, kind of flag that as a, as a congestion criteria. So that's another, you know, operational air quality. So that was what we used to generate the list. And yeah, I think, you know, obviously love feedback on, you know, do you feel like we captured the the elements, you know, of the safe roads? Are there other elements that you need to try to find some data to support? Oh, the other piece of this that's not in the list is obviously we don't maintain a list of of unresolved significant encroachments. So things like the encampments. We are going to make mention of that in our, in our letter to Secretary Duffey in response to this about our proactive efforts, you know, working with the local governments to make sure that that our right of way to stay clear of those kind of activities for the safety of everybody. We do have maps of where we have have addressed those. We obviously don't have maps of where they may crop up next. It's a very dynamic situation. So that's the only other piece of sort of that distraction component. So we kind of took the strategy of let's, let's put it all out there. We don't, we didn't want to Let's let's put it all out there, we don't, we didn't want to screen prematurely. On any of this data and say, you know, okay, we're only going to look at the top ten crash locations in Alaska, you know, we really did want to paint. A full picture of the uh. Safety and operational challenges in our arterial system. Uh and then over the next year, we'll be working. With the MPOs and other stakeholders like freight. For example, on how we prioritize that list and develop the action plan. So the next step by the end of FY twenty six is an action plan. To uh USDOT saying how we plan to address uh the elements on. And that was a, that was a, one of the big questions on safe roads was. So does that, you know, they say, and that will be addressed by FY twenty six. Your list is supposed to be things that will be addressed by end of that by twenty six, and. We did get clarity from federal highways that a address just means we have a plan. Or or resolved, and if not, that it has to be completed. And so that was another motivation to not prematurely screen this list, we had sixty days to put it together. Get it through, you know, discussion of the MPOs, it was pretty tight timeline and. It's certainly screening it as something we want to do deliberately collaboratively. Sixty days wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna cut up that, so we kind of threw a kitchen sink at it. Approach, um and I think it's a good approach because uh it gives us the most of the greatest ability to diversify our approach as well. You know, if you take the top ten safety locations, I think they're they're all in Anchorage. Even even a lot of the bridges stand up being in Anchorage. We have more arterials, so just make sure. Now, all that said, there's no additional funding um tagged to this at this time, there's no. There's no requirements beyond this focus, this national focus on these routes. Which I think is great uh to be focusing on that, this is arterials are overwhelmingly where our. Serious and fatal crashes are occurring nationally. But. And honestly, if you go through these lists, you know, the crash lists, a lot of these locations, we have projects. A lot of those bridges, we have projects on. And so uh I think this will also potentially be a good opportunity for our state to highlight. The great work we're already doing. The motivation behind the safe roads initiative. I'd say.
I just got some questions.
Yeah.
What was the genesis of this letter in the first place?
I I have no inner loop to Secretary Duffy. I thought, well, okay, so I I do. I take that back, uh federal highways did share um a graphic. With us, uh when we kind of debrief with them of expectations on this. And it was something like over forty, like forty seven percent of traffic fatalities, serious crashes occur on our arterial road network. So that was, that was a big driver of focusing on safety. On these roads where we are seen. And I think he they mentioned that a little bit in the letter. But there is a, there is a graph, I'll try to remember to send that to Jackson. Of uh the crash statistics that kind of drove some of this focus.
So then you were tasked with coming up with these lists. You come up with crash costs per thousand. How in heaven's name do you come up with that?
It's a formula, um so there's these uh there's rates that the federal government publishes called CAPCO and don't ask me what that stands for, K A P C O. They establish the value of human life. Uh they establish the societal value of a fatality, of a serious injury, of a property damage only crash. We know how many of those we have, that gets multiplied by factors divided by the. Vehicle miles traveled, that's for that number. So it's entirely data driven. Numbers there.
So their expectation after this is submitted is for us to. To do what exactly?
We have to develop an action plan of of what we're going to do to address each of these identified.
We being DOT or we being?
We being DOT in collaboration with the.
So does this skew, maybe we, you only have, there's no money that accompanies this, right? So is it just put pressure on the other funds we have to allocate in this direction as opposed to a different project?
I can't answer that right now, I don't know, once the list get turned in, what the next. Task is, I I. But it's not clear to me, the limited information that we see on the USDOT website is. When I look through it, it's like quite sure what they're asking for, I'm not quite sure what the end goal is here, what this will lead to.
It's very likely we'll be asked to report on our progress on the list. Well, that, but with no, you know, not necessarily that comes with penalties, like there is an HSIP, we have the. The that decides for VRU uh because of some of our our laws. Specific amount we have to spend on HSIP. There's nothing like that um has been indicated. It's possible with surface reauthorization that you see a new safe roads category of funding, I don't, I don't know. To me, that's another benefit of keeping the list big, more things eligible, uh but this is going to be a focus. The majority of these. A a lot of these are going to be the NHS flavor of money. That, so that would be, you know, DOT's. Funding to to reallocate, like I said, a lot of these do have. Projects, like old Steve's at Fairbanks, we've got a project on the books for that. Geis Road, uh you know, so the start gate of these crashes was twenty nineteen. We would have just completed that intersection, but that's Geis Road. You know, depending on. That's the whole length.
This crashed out, data does not take into consideration DUIs and things of that nature.
It is purely uh the type of crash multiplied by the cost.
My craziness to this is that it. The majority of them on a particular project were DUI driven. There is no design element that's. You can do to offset that, that's just basic stupidity.
Sorry, I can't.
I just, I just, I just, some of this doesn't make sense. Okay, thank you.
Um your first action item will be the uh resolution appreciation of girls who will. We've got a one pager in page thirty seven. Thanks, Corey, all right, together. I like how it reads and. My assumption would be is that myself and the chair would sign this, but maybe we want signatures from the whole board or all three mayors or. I I not whatever you guys would like to say. There, um we are hoping to uh pay for the materials for this program to continue a second year. Uh in our office budget, so. Uh we would basically announce that to the school in addition to providing uh this resolution, but anything after you guys want to add. Can you all discuss tomorrow?
Okay, good, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh next act is faster program program, the later figure on page thirty nine. Here's the list, it's that middle column there for federal fifteen year twenty twenty six. I've got this identified by each local government, so the two cities, the borough. University as well as DOT. Uh some of these are road projects, some of these are sidewalk and path projects, by policy, we try to spend eighty percent on roadway projects and twenty percent on path and sidewalk projects. This is, this is a program where we truly try to give each local government a slice of the pie, based on, you know, the population or area that they serve. And so through two subcommittee meetings in June and July, this is the list that the group uh came up with as far as the recommendation of the policy board. Uh there were a many more project nominations to us than what we could afford for a single construction season. But we didn't leave all those on the list and then just push them out to be uh uh kind of earmarked for twenty twenty seven or twenty twenty eight destruction. To, on the color coding here, you, on the left, you'll see. Projects that are in black text, products that are in red text. The black text is what was previously approved by the policy board for the amount of funding that we have next year, that's about one point one million. The red ones are the new nominations that came to the subcommittee uh as a result of this uh process, so there's a lot of new new project ideas from regional governments. For the program. And with the funding split, we hit the mark right at eighty twenty, like we strive to meet by policy. Um on the next page, page forty. This product list does come with a bill. Yeah, again, we. In our current transportation program, we have programmed one point one million for construction next summer. Uh but by adopting this full list of project priorities, we would be raising that up to two point four million. Uh however, we do have one point nine million available in funds that are not programmed to any project next year, so that would soak up. About two thirds or three quarters of that funding, two thirds of that funding. And still leave us with an available balance of just over six hundred thousand for other product needs next federal fiscal year, so. So the the motion made by the technical committee was not only recommending approval of the product list, but also an increase in funding to this amount, to by importantly. And uh yeah, and that vote was unanimous that technical last week, so. We didn't have any arguments. About product list, everybody seemed happy as a result of processing.
Question for Calvin while he's here on this, um one of the South Davis Park for the fiscal year twenty seven or twenty eight. Which I assume you guys have to do. Would you be maintaining that rule of?
Yes, yeah, let me uh, I can give more information for our parks folks on that too, but that, I would, that's all right.
And so are any of these CRP eligible? I don't know if you guys have been having a hard time. But just something to think about.
Some, but not all of the non-overshadowed projects would be, so. So imagine this scenario, if you are. A gaffing road sidewalk, if you're replacing a sidewalk that already exists, there's no air quality issue without it. Just because you've upgraded sidewalk business, I mean, you're going to get all this increased use. So, but if you build a new sidewalk or one that currently exists or a new path to one doesn't exist, then it'd be out of that, so. Yeah, some of these could be. Yeah, we're gonna, next month, there's going to be a few new CMAC project nominations from DOT. That were down the technical committee score, this is going to open up our funding table for CMAC and CRP. And so. Yeah, we're doing.
Yeah, just something to keep in mind, I I don't know if you guys are struggling with it, but these. We found CRP to be challenging, we found some some good paths forward, but.
Yeah.
But the traditional CRP projects create other problems.
We have definitely had some challenges on uniqueness of some of the CRP products nominated to us. Reprogram to something else.
Yes.
I'm also anticipating the carbon reduction program to go away, the next transportation bill, so we only have one more year's worth of funding to make sure that we get obligated. But I'm expecting that to go away.
I am.
But hopefully that money just goes into S to P or something.
That's, that's exactly what Ashdo or everybody's pushing for, is, you know, get rid of all these boutique. Get it down to two or three funding categories and what states decide most efficiently is what they're buying.
But as we. If we award CRP funds, it has to be done underneath the competitive process, so like we'd have to score those projects, these are, these projects are not scored. These are ideas that are thrown at us as a subcommittee, and here's a drawing of what we want to do, DOT estimates the projects, then we're all just kind of like, okay. You can have a hundred thousand, you can have fifty thousand, you can have two hundred thousand. And we let the local governments determine what their priorities are, as opposed to going through their data scoring process with us. To award CRP or CMAC funds, we'd actually have to score the projects. This process. Okay, the next action item is a comment letter to the USDOT and priorities for the next uh transportation bill reorganization. This RFI, well, it says. Yeah, so due August twentieth, but that may. Maybe kind of, they have moved to separate. But page forty four, this request for information that came in. The comments that were to submit, they, USDOT has asked us to follow four themes. One is safety, one is accelerating product delivery. Number three is increasing opportunities through investment and transportation infrastructure, and number four is strengthening partnerships. And so the comment letter that I put together um categorizes the comments across those four themes. On the next page. Page forty five. The policy board has seen this before at previous uh board meetings, but these are the general priorities for the National Association of MPOs. There are five here total, uh four of these made it into my letter, the one that I did exclude was MPOs becoming direct recipients of certain federal funds. A small MPO. I'd have to have a licensed CPA to be able to accept and process federal funds that I'd rather continue on your your team. For our, for our work. But anyway, that's the only one I left off, but I do have talking points for the other four.
There's something there, though, could speak to with. Providing some clarity or simplification for two CFR two hundred or farmers or sub recipients. That's where we've gotten balled up with federal highways is. A lot of these relationships are sort of quasi between like a a contract, like. That you would have to go competitively solicit and a sub recipient, which is a pass through, you guys are. It's pass through, but it's coming with a bunch of strings on the passer side that that make it really like, the RPO is a great example, you know. Stipends don't actually work when you read the two CFR two hundred requirements, and so. That might be a good direction to take that theme, but make it a little bit more useful to to us here where. DOT is still holding that final stewardship and oversight and and financial accounting piece, but. We've got some more latitude to give to to. Get the work going and get the money flowing.
Spoon feed me an amendment tomorrow on that, so that I could add a bullet to my letter for it. I have not researched this enough to know what I'm talking about. But maybe if you, maybe if you prepare an amendment. That gives me kind of good direction on. What you'd like us to ask on that, that'd be helpful. I see your point, so. Okay, I'm going to rattle through these real quick, um and we can discuss these, I guess, more at length. Uh tomorrow, and I give a longer introduction, but. Begin on page forty six, um I'm just going to go through the bold bullets there. So for enhancing transportation safety, um I'd like to see the formula funding for the safe routes to school program. reinstated, this is, this is funding that was. Suballocated to communities between two thousand five and two thousand twelve, that project funding has gone away. The transportation bill has basically. They put this money into the transportation alternative program, but I I think that this is a very. Uh benefits program to have its own dedicated funding source to focus some of your money on the to the schools. The next one is converting uh some of the bridge investment. Program funding to a sub allocated program by road classification. Such that the, so that the bridge investment program doesn't just get all invested into interstate and highway bridges, that. There is a set aside for some of these lower volume roads, and what I'm thinking about is like Mini Street. Here in town, Airway Drive, uh off the Badger Road, um O'Connor Road Bridge, uh here, the Stocker College, some of these smaller volume roads that. These bridges are not as expensive as a interstate or highway bridge, but these bridges could potentially use up our entire. Years allocate, suballocation of funding on funding categories, so these these bridge replacements are really difficult, first of all, and, you know, to try to. To try to afford. But if this bridge investment program somebody allocated some money to these lower classification roadways, we might have a better opportunity to get some of these. Some of these old bridges replaced. On the next page. Being more explicit in the transportation bill to allow year to year carry forward of all federal transportation fund categories. I know in the regulations, there's this period of availability where projects, you have three years. In order to obligate these funds, uh I don't believe it's across all fund categories, but. When a project is in design and experiences a right of way delay or something with a utility or, you know. We didn't know those contaminated soils and that now we've got to go through this. And we had construction funding set up, you know, to get it out to bid this summer, but now it's not going to be built till next year. To allow those projects to move forward uninterrupted and let that funding just sit there. And so when it's ready, say, March. That we can put it out to bid for the previous year's funding without, you know, without any issue. Currently, what we're doing is that we see a schedule slip. We try to find a project to rededicate that funding to, and then we have to find a project in the next year to take funding from to make. Get that project out to bid. It's just a awkward, in my opinion, unnecessary exercise. Be nice if these projects could just be programmed with funding and then three years before. As it's, as they experience delays on our uninterrupted.
So Jackson, but going back to the bridges. I wonder if maybe the the efficient way to ask. That's is to expand the definition of off system. We already have the off system set aside, but it's it's very hard to me because it's a very limited pool of bridges that often have ownership challenges associated with them. Where if we can expand that definition of off system to include these. Non, non NHS, non AHS or something like that, that might be more efficient. I worry about anything that creates additional. You know, so the intent is. We want to make sure these bridges are getting priority. But what this looks like in federal regulation is. You will spend twenty percent of BIF on minor collector, thirty percent on major, and pretty soon. You can't find the bridges in the category you need, the year you need it. You know, keeping keeping that open enough while still making the intent, like some of the think about already. There and and I'll chew on that a little bit with Leslie too, it's he would love something, but. I totally am a hundred percent with you and it actually be great for us if if. These bridges where the ownership is known, you're more straightforward, you're still poor condition, building all the metrics, but. Let me spending that that off system, meeting that off system. Criteria. I think that can be a point for all of us. And I I do question your, these bridges are less to replace. Bridge cost is by size of bridge, not by where it's located. Hey, well, unless you're talking no. But they all cost the same for square foot of the deck area. Really what you're saying is your bridges are smaller.
Yeah, but the the bricks don't represent two door sloughs. It's not over the chair, so they're sharp spans. Oh, and just for reference, every time you see red text in here, these are the technical committee edits, so. Well, that's why it's red.
They're busy.
Yeah, it was really good. They they gave me eight amendments, but I thought there was all value added. It was good. They were definitely invested into this exercise. Next one is maintaining the Alaska's special match rate for transportation funding. We get nine percent. When the standard match is twenty percent. I could see in some future bill that that goes away and everybody's twenty percent.
As long as the feds own all the land.
Yep. And then the next one, this is, this is one that I've been talking about for a long time, but. This updating our long range transportation plan, having to do this every four years, it's just ridiculous. I mean, every time we do it, it's five hundred thousand dollars and. It takes us a year and a half to two years to do a plan update, and as soon as we get done, we're working on procurement to hire the consultant back to start on the next plan update. It's a. It's, it's, I feel like it's it's wasteful and we're just constantly in this planning cycle. It's like, no, 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 our project list is good. Like for a long time, and if we need to do an amendment to our plan, then we'll do that five years from now, but not a complete plan rewrite. I'd like to see this like once every ten years is the requirement. So just this is a complaint nationwide across almost every NPO I've talked to, that this stuff to pay cycles way too frequent. So. Anyways, that's there.
It is frustrating. Out of every dollar we take in from whatever source, about how much goes to planning. Instead of actually completing a project, it's it's questionable. That's, I mean, our math things, it was frustrating.
The next one is reducing the map requirement for metropolitan transit planning funds. This one has always kind of rubbed me a little bit weird because. For an urbanized area, you're mandated to have a metropolitan planning organization. Then you get planning funds and it's not enough money to even. Probably fund the organization, you know, dip in the product line. Pay for your office. But then, so you're required to have this organization, but then also on top of that, you're required to pay match. So my idea was reducing or eliminating the match requirement, and this is supported by the National Association of MPOs. Many other MPOs want to see the same thing. But the technical committee reeled that back and reports all the thing.
I would change it to all of them. Even say we eliminate. Hundred percent federal share.
That'll be a board discussion tomorrow, so. The technical committee thought the local government should have some skin in the game there, but just reducing the match department.
But you have the skin in the game in actual projects, sure. That's getting the game, yeah, for whatever that plan says to. Yeah, cool.
Hey, next page, page forty eight. This is a whole new bullet here. This is one I kind of struggle with, so. When I was in Washington DC. The National Association of MPOs, their staff as well as Senator Sullivan's staff, like, hey. Like, we love all your ideas here, but you need to throw something in for Eric Paul. And my response to that was sort of. The Eric Qualley stuff is in the CFR that the EPA is in charge of, not federal highways. Like, there's not much in Title twenty three that. I I know we want to move the needle on Eric Qualley's stuff, but I couldn't find a real strong blanket. Just what you should be doing is focusing on. That require all this, so. In my discussions and then in my research. The thing I came up with was updating and expanding the exemption criteria. So for exempt projects for air quality conformity and then. If we get ourselves in the highway sanctions in the future, because we don't need attainment in twenty twenty seven. Actually have highway sanctions, there is a list of projects that. Types that can move forward even when your federal funding is being withheld. Based on my research, these lists haven't been modernized or or updated since nineteen ninety six. And. I feel like there's project types out there that should be eligible as exempt rare quality conformity that are not on this list. I mean, even electric vehicle stuff, it's not on the list because. There there weren't electric vehicles thirty years ago as a thing nationwide, but. So anyways, it's basically dusting off. Federal Highway's policy and what that project list is. Updating and expanding that list so that more project types are eligible. Maybe this is weak. I don't know. I I'd be curious about Jason Oldface. He's online tomorrow. I think this would be a good question for him. But I could pivot to something else. And then the last couple here, there's just three more or yeah, four more. Maintaining similar increased funding levels as a current transportation bill, but converting some of the discretionary grant funding to formal funding. I do find benefit in some of the large discretionary grant funding programs where like you're going to get yourself a twenty five or thirty million dollar project, but some of these. There's all of these new discretionary grants by USDA, and a lot of them are small dollar amounts, and it's like. You spend a lot of time competing for them and then you don't get them because it's hard for us to compete with cities that have millions of people. They have such better justification, so. If it was converted to formal funding and then just kind of spread out to states, I thought that would be a better approach.
Well, and the grant program is just a fair lot. Everyone will tell you that it really comes down to your professional delegation and their. Not even about the application to turn.
So I think that's a good one. This next one is providing the opportunity for a match waiver for economically disadvantaged entities. We run into a few issues here recently. So, for example, UAF doesn't have match money to pay for their projects. We have to ask the state to cover their match for West Ham on Drive. Our public school system with their budget rules, if if they have a project on school district grounds. That I don't believe they're going to be able to pay the match. The Morse Thompson Cultural and Visitor Center, we picked the funding source for them for their project out there because by DOT policies, it covers the match for those fund types. So we have some entities like that that. Are challenging with having that nine percent match. And so the idea is that. Federal Highway is to set up a match waiver application process. That if you demonstrate this financial need, potentially on a case by case basis, federal highways could waive the match for. Because all these projects that I just discussed, there are facilities that are used by the community as a whole, so it's not just doing something for them, but.
Have we ever had a problem getting a state to cover? Match for those situations? Because the state has a has a match where you were processed.
We've always been able to figure it out. I get nervous every time one of these things come up, say, this is a really good project, but. You don't have any match, well, I can't do anything for you. But but yes, we have had some successes here where the state goes ahead. I mean, or we delete this comment.
I like the theme of it. I just wonder if there's a better way to ask it. You know, something like wave. Wave match requirements for certain categories. Project is is for an educational institution. Or economically disadvantaged, although I guess EJ Screen's gone. I don't know if it ever came back. If there's a better way to phrase, because when I see match waiver process, like where we have that state level. There's already a way. It's not a federal match waiver, and then you think about the feds trying to administer something like that. My PTSD over the last year kicks in.
Well, something to think about.
Just some thoughts there, yeah.
Uh, the last two is next page. Increasing the or doubling the apportionment of planning funds to MPOs. Currently in the transportation bill, the planning funds for MPOs is less than one percent of the total funding of the bill. The National Association has been. Of MPOs have been pushing really hard to raise that to two or three percent. So our issue here locally is is that. We don't receive enough planning funds to operate our office. So every year we dip into our project funds to fulfill our office budgets. We always grab a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year. Project fund. But this is historically, planning funds have been underfunded in the transportation bill for. Couple decades worth of funding cycles. Anyway, so it is a big push across the nation from other MPOs to try to get these planning funds increased so that we all don't have to give them the proper money to fill our office pockets. And then the last one is to establish dedicated formal funding for regional planning organizations, RPOs. We just discussed during the staff report there. So the existence of regional planning organizations. That they are recognized in. Regulation and they have basic planning activity requirements to fulfill, which are similar to ours. But there's no funding that is dedicated for their work. They still have to. RPOs have to go to their state or their local governments to try to find funding to do their to do their planning. But they've been established in thirty three states. So. Over the past couple decades, there's more and more popping up all across the nation. Got three or four now in Alaska. They're still kind of struggling to be a start.
Yeah, we've got one that's active. Southeast competencies online, but then maybe. Then there's two that have not. Not been active. I think fastest one that the other one was. And a lot of the Copper Valley is the active. But yeah, I think some of it does come down to funding. Some of it is that sub recipients is some of it is. We're all trying to kind of slice out and say bye. The eyes are getting bigger.
Okay, then the last action item is our office budget. Again, my intention tomorrow is to present the draft office budget to you all. I'll go through every category and show you increases. I don't think there's many decreases. But then offer up the opportunity for amendments from the board to the office budget, and then we'll bring it back to you again in September for approval of the office budget. With an executive session for merit increases for employees, which is something that we do annually. On page fifty there, just to kind of show you the format of this, which is similar to previous years. You'll see what our draft budget numbers are there in black and then one percent changes from. Current federal fiscal year to the next. So in blue shows you what was approved by the policy board last year. And then, and I have some comments there for reasons for increase and decrease for each of those general accounts, but then you get into the granular detail. On your pages. Page fifty one is the personnel category for the four employees of the organization. Things shown in red are numbers that changed from federal fiscal year twenty five to. Twenty six. So this includes the two point five percent coal increase. This is based on anchored CPI, our first. Our last half of last year and first half of this year, and I do have that printed out. As well as the most recent premium adjustments for insurance for health dental. Then the next page. Shows your various accounts, so opposite administrative. Information technology meetings, training, membership dues, next page advertising and supplies. Again, everything in blue is what was approved last year. Everything in red is a change. Then everything that in black numbers there and then point six columns are basically the same request. Last year as the for this coming, it's coming.
There, recent Jackson, you guys are using Zoom instead of Teams. Is there any cost difference in those two?
I don't know about cost difference. We opted for Zoom in the early days pandemic because it was accessible to the public. Teams is a lot more. So it was a big bit of a stop where people are already using it as well. So I mean, that's what I think.
That might be worth looking into. I don't know how much of an increase that is, but the other two MPOs are all doing it.
I will say as someone who's primarily teams, the Zoom actually is what kills me every time. I end up ten minutes late to every meeting because it needs to reinstall. If I just used it like a week ago, maybe it's just a state Alaska system thing, but. They seem to have similar functionality. To be curious, if there's a cost to. Not, not certainly. Well, one way or the other, but.
Yes, in the budget, Olivia's cell phone stipend, did that get missed or does she not get?
I have a cellphone.
We we have a work cellphone for her. Whereas the other three employees were using our personal cell phones.
Thank you.
Or you can do the both. Don't do the both. That's what I do, and I love it.
She wants to keep those two lives separate, so.
If I wasn't afraid that my authenticator would just stop working and I could get to anything, I would have given this back a while ago.
So page, I guess, fifty four. This is where we see some of the, you know. Yes, biggest increases in the budget. There's two things that we want to do in this next year. The first one of which is opening up a community grant program similar to the Golden Valley Gensence program. So that we can award small grants to other nonprofits or schools around town for transportation related activities, whatever that. Whatever that may be, whatever they come up with. I mean, it might be, they're asking for a thousand dollars for bike helmets for. Three or four classes of kids, whatever it may be. But it it would be a grant program where they would apply our technical committee. Would basically score the applications, make a recommendation to the board to give out small grants. You know, it could be a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, maybe a big grant would be five thousand dollars. But it's just kind of sharing some of our nonprofit profit with other nonprofits in town. And then and then that would also be something that, you know, that. If it's something that gets built or whatever, that they basically sign a maintenance agreement that they're responsible for that, then there's no local government that would be responsible for whatever. As it gets installed, but these might be things that just we purchase. And then the next thing is a vehicle. We're looking, we'd like to ultimately, we'd like to get us like a small cargo. Bam style vehicle. Since we opened up nonprofit doors, we've been using our personal vehicles for work purposes. Corey Livid put on a lot of events. And. We're paying right now five thousand a year for commercial auto insurance. So that when we use our personal vehicles for work, that we get into an accident or. Eventually covered. Actually covered. Um, so this would switch from using our personal vehicles for work purposes to a dedicated vehicle form. The idea would be is that we park it in the parking garage. So, um, it's short walking access to go to and from there, drive it over, load it up, throw it over the fence, whatnot.
I'll just keep it loaded.
Yeah, just keep it loaded. But, um, for staff members, it would be nice if we had a vehicle for our organization. So something up for discussion. And I removed the funding amounts that we've had in there standing year to year, year to year for grant writing services, match for small grants, attorney consultation fees. For seven years, we've had these line items in budgets, we've never used them. So they're always placeholders and like, what if, case something came up? But like even in this category here for twenty twenty five, you see that the board approved seventy five thousand dollars for other data fund appropriations. But what this current federal fiscal year, they've spent eleven thousand. But we we just, we're not participating in these other activities here. We spent eleven thousand of the twenty thousand on any proportions. That's all we've done.
So that community grant program, maybe that'll be federal money?
Definitely be money out of our monthly bank account. We've been building a balance on there ever since we opened up the doors. Our, we have about three hundred thousand dollars surplus right now. That we can as nonprofit provide small grants to other nonprofits. It has to be in line with our our mission purpose of something transportation related, but again, we'd model it out for like the.
Just wondering how much red tape would cost.
Which one was the?
Red tape.
Oh, this, this wouldn't.
Yeah, okay.
This is simple. This is five months and three months. No, no federal one. We're still got thirty thousand dollars sitting there for a regular one bus shelter. I know it's not going to cover the whole cost of it, but.
I saw that. I appreciate that. Um, can I ask a couple of questions about the vehicle? What kind of vehicle are you looking at?
We were, Cory and I have been talking about the, what's it called? It's like the Ford Transit Connect. So it's like the tiny one. Um, but really just something that we can put like. Sandwich boards into and our banners and tables, bike racks. It's just the stuff that we're constantly hauling up and down the stairs into storage now. And it would just be nice to have sort of like a branded representation instead of the.
What about like a Ford Expedition or or something of that? Kind of a larger style SUV. Um, I know that the city of North Pole is getting ready to repurpose and get cellular vehicles. Got, I think sixty five thousand miles on it. It's a twenty fourteen, so it's old, but it's a Sega. Quite bad.
Jerry's got an ink on your too.
Jerry, do you really?
Right there, when you said that, I'm thinking all the vehicles we've got. With the auction on. We have over in the parking garage a very nice Toyota. Land Cruiser. But, um, it's been sitting there for five years.
FJ or what?
And it it actually is one of the models, kind of a collectible and kind of the in thing to buy now. I've been trying to get it out of there for years and we're close to getting it out of there and taking it over the income yard. I mean, we might have things. My comment on this would be the the income part of it. If we get a sheet showing the income breakdown again, the funding sources for this. From the each of the municipalities, um, and the the feds. Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet that I presented to the board last year that I can update with twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that would be good, I think, for them to see. It's always confusing to me with funding sources versus some things.
Yep. I'll do that.
So tomorrow, what what are you just expecting or you want a action item?
It's an action items, so we we want to present the budget more detail than what I just did. And then allow questions by the whole board, any board member. And then if you guys want to make any amendments tomorrow, like make motions to. Add this, delete this. You do that, but just I'm not, I'm not looking for you to adopt the budget tomorrow. Because we still need to consider employee merit increases next month and then definitely put a bow on the budget, so. Typically, we we discuss the budget across two meetings.
You could, so you want us to put it on the floor so we can actually make an action item, make an amendment if they want to become amendment. And then postpone to the next.
Yes. Unless you just want to adopt it, remember. If you're ready. So.
Now, knowing that. One or two, I haven't even seen this yet. I guess they won't want to do anything.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a lot here and there's increases across the categories, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, just behind that page fifty five shows you the CPI increase for staff that is added prior to merit increases. And then, uh, page fifty six shows you our budget versus actuals for the year. This is through August twelfth. Based on ten and a half, twelve months. Our target is to be below eighty eight percent expended. Right now, we're only seventy five percent expended on the year. So as you can see there, the office budget that the board approved last year. We're currently, we are two hundred thousand under budget on the month and a half here. Month and a half left in the federal fiscal year, so. Anyways, our budget definitely reflects, you know, our apples. We're, we're doing good across all categories except for membership dues, which were two hundred dollars. So unanticipated membership due increases. And then pages fifty seven, fifty eight is our obligations. The boxes highlighted in yellow are obligations that have not yet occurred. So we're waiting for the obligation for the design phase for Cowell Street for Airport Wade. The the China River. And then on the next page, there is a series of. Sort of CMAC and CRP projects that had to work their way through the borough assembly for matching maintenance agreements. And so these are being obligated for the last minute. As well as the initial design funding from the UAF compressed natural gas fueling station, so. Everything is going to get obligated right here except the bike racks for the max transit buses. The borough did not advance that. Through the assembly for matching maintenance. And then the other one was the North Pole High School Access and Circulation Study, which has been delayed until next year. So DOT has been working on identifying a project manager for that one, so I have scope, but just. To understand, we just kind of ran it in time, but. Those funds can be carried for the next year, so that that obligation may.
You don't need that, do you?
That's a tough one. It really is.
So, and.
Well, FFY twenty six starts in like two months, so.
Yep. The miss obligation for the current October, so that you get something off the ground very soon. So not concerned about that, but that that one has, I've been notified that.
How do they feel about the budget on that? Roughly three hundred thousand. Not sure what the what the West Valley touch one costs.
Well, it was originally funded at a hundred and fifty thousand. And then at a previous. Technical committee and policy note meetings, you guys, you all raised the budget to three hundred double it based on. Our experience with Hutchinson and West Valley. I I feel like West, West Valley and Hudson, that was closer to four hundred thousand, but that was a joint campus. It's like two high schools. It's a, there's a lot more there.
It's complicated.
Yep. So I feel like North Pole three hundred is probably a good starting point. Yeah, yeah. The fee negotiations coming with the consulting and higher. And we'll sort it out with offsets or something. But yeah, the board's already acted on that, double budget to three hundred. Didn't solve anymore? Yeah.
See if we can get it done in the same amount of time.
Just spots still on. You have two signatures. A rent check and then.
So that's an official meeting stop.
That's an official, yeah. We're adjourned to three forty two.